I do, if you can hear me, I switched computers, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent.
Excellent. So Commissioner Johnson, one of the questions that you had was would this apply to staff that are working in the 100% virtual model as well as staff that are working in the blended model? And the answer is a little bit yes and no. So if a staff member is quarantined and they're a 100% virtual staff member, it would be fairly easy for them to continue their work from home while being quarantined, as long as they're well enough to work. So in that case, for a 100% virtual staff member, that would have a smaller impact on our need to find, you know, a substitute or somebody to help them with their job. At the same time, if they became ill and they needed to stay home for an extended period of time and weren't able to work, then yes, their absence does impact us and we do need to find somebody who can fill in for them while they rest and recover. For the faculty that's in the blended model, if they are quarantined and are simply teaching remotely, which we have had staff do, if they're teaching remotely, we do need another staff member in the room with the students for classroom management, to ensure supervision, safety, access to materials and that sort of thing. But it doesn't necessarily need to be somebody who could also teach calculus BC or whatever course the teacher is teaching. It just needs somebody who is comfortable and confident in being in a class full of students. And again, if that teacher were ill and were unable to teach at all, then of course we would need a substitute. So it does apply to both situations and both a little bit differently.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes, I was interested in a little information on the dashboard. I know that it's under discussion. Is, does that mean that we're moving forward with it? And is there a timeline for having that information available?
You mean out of the, Commissioner Lyons, out of the Model 1 and Model 2?
Yes.
I wanted to share this progress with you and we would talk about this tomorrow at Agenda Setting, whether you would like an approval on the 5th or to get more data and to get more input from people. And this would possibly be one of those coherent governance situations where, you know, by a certain date, we would have, we would have this information and have a model ready to go, for example, by October 1st. Or it could go to the board on October 5th by chance. But that's basically the work that we've been doing in the background, but also now in public to share some progress with you. And like Commissioner Johnson had said, you know, those quantifiable measures. That's why I think Wednesday is going to be very critical to speak with our system leaders as well as our ECAE to determine at what point, at what point in this process and what are the numbers for that staffing coverage where it becomes too much of a burden on our system to keep pulling from other schools or central office by chance? And really digging into that instructional preparedness where we might have to close a school for two weeks. So anyway, that's, that's just what I wanted to share about that. So it was, it's really, you know, we could discuss that tomorrow at Agenda Setting. We would be prepared to do so on the 5th. Or if the board were to say, you know, let's have this done by October 1st and would trust the administration with this since we're getting stakeholder input, that would be great too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Zer.
Yeah, I am curious about, I guess, with the work that's been done with, with staff to prepare them for something like this. So for teachers who are not teaching virtually, how prepared would they be for a transition like this? How much of the virtual training, the professional development have those teachers been getting? And there's this, you know, there's this chunk of kids, first and second grade, who have not been virtual at all, who would not be in, would not be logged into Canvas, would not be able to, parents would not have any experience or access to those things that kids who are in the blended model and at school only two days a week in person. You know, so what is the, can you speak to those, those groups for how we would work in that, in such a tight turnaround of four days to make sure that they were met on that Monday with an equitable experience compared to their peers?
Definitely. I'll start out very generally and then I'd like Jim Schmidt to comment on it. That's one of those things, Commissioners Zer, where it's instructional preparedness. We'd obviously be in close connection with Eau Claire City County Health. We've monitored daily. We monitor those numbers daily and, and speak with them, communicate with them or email them. But I would have to say that, you know, the instructional preparedness is something that, you know, we had been thinking about for probably two to three weeks. And I know Jim Schmidt has been instrumental in that, especially with our Wednesday training. So I'll, I'll leave it to Jim to speak more specifically about that.
So I'd like to clarify, the groups that are first and second grade, they do have one virtual day a week, which is Wednesday. The groups in cohorts A and B have three virtual days already each week. And cohort C has five. So they already all do have virtual days. And as I mentioned last week, we began trainings at the beginning of the first week in August. We've continued to offer trainings into the school year every Wednesday. And we are, we sent out all staff emails identifying all the different training opportunities available to staff. We'll do that again this week. So we continue to target the different tools. There are tools ranging from logistics on how to operate some of the technologies to the, to the curricular tools that are very specific to content such as StudySync for English Language Arts or ThinkCentral for elementary mathematics. So that is an ongoing process and we continue to offer things at all different levels because we have staff at all different levels as well, where some are just simply trying to still navigate how to work the technology to, to staff there at the level where they are trying to really leverage those tools to increase student learning as much as possible. So that will continue, but every, every staff member has been, has been expected to provide five days of learning. And as I said, either one virtually, three or five.
So just to follow up then, Jim, so you guys are feeling confident then that, that students who are currently enrolled in, you know, face-to-face classes, who are, who are getting core content either in-person, on their, you know, on their in-person days and are only accessing electives or, or certainly the, those four days between Thursday and Monday, that that's a sufficient amount of time to get those kids enrolled in their core content classes and assigned out so that Canvas is ready to go on Monday? Because that is a tight turnaround. So I'm just, I'm echoing the parent concern and student concern that I think Superintendent Johnson was, was alluding to, just that would we have a delay like we've seen with virtual, getting the kids enrolled, getting the kids into their classes, getting the classes divided out? You know, so I'm just, I'm concerned about that tight turnaround.
That would assume that we would reorganize the students' classes. But if students stayed with their teacher in the same configuration, they would, they would just simply use the same set of tools and be in the same connection. If we do decide to balance classes, there is a risk that, because there's that synchronization process. So if you change their schedule, by changing their schedule, meaning who their teacher is, that could delay things. So that is actually something that we are investigating as to whether or not the benefit of trying to balance sizes is worth the potential disruption to access to the materials.
Great, thanks.
Since this bit of downtime, I'll remind our student representatives that we welcome your comments and questions. If you do want to be recognized to speak, you can just unmute your mic and I tend to flip back and forth across my screen and try to see who is unmuted. Then I will, of course, recognize you.
Dr. Nordin?
Yes, Superintendent Johnson. I also have Zoe Wolf.
Oh, okay. Otherwise, I was going to give a student perspective from this morning, but I'd love to hear from Zoe.
Sure. Well, so Ms. Wolf, we'll turn it over to you.
Hi. Well, tonight you guys have been talking a lot about ways to improve a projected fully virtual model. But is there any other ways to improve the current blended and virtual models?
Why don't you go ahead with that?
Sure. So Zoe, part of the challenge for our staff is they have been trained and have implemented in-person learning for a long time. There are several shifts we're trying to help our staff make and they are not easy shifts. Some of those are in terms of creating asynchronous materials instead of trying to do things live. I know that's, typically they're used to working with people live. It's also trying to develop more small group sessions rather than whole group. Having assessments look different rather than being, where they are responsive such as in a test, operating products instead, where they do some sort of performance assessment. In a classroom, you know, a bell rings, a bell ends, the time is constant. The, the shift online is learning so that students engage at different times and there requires a lot of independence, which is a big challenge for students. So the time is much more variable. And that takes a little bit of balancing for both the instructor to work on with the students. The other thing is when you are not in a classroom for in-person, those are off days. And as we just mentioned from Commissioner Zer, in virtual, every day is a learning day and really students engage in that at different pacing. So there's that shift of thinking that, that it's an off day and really it's that, the learning tasks are assigned. And finally, the, the last one is that really trying to figure out how to manage class sizes because class sizes are very different in terms of virtual because you're managing more of a caseload and you're not trying to typically engage your whole class simultaneously because it's just, even if, even if the numbers get down towards like less than 15, it's just a lot of people to have on at once. And so really trying to work on managing it as a caseload rather than managing as a whole group enterprise simultaneously. So there's a lot of shifts we're trying to move, but, but it's, it's not an easy shift because it requires the production of materials and the delivery that is done very differently from original training. And it's, and it's a huge challenge for staff. And they're doing a great job of it, but we are continuing to make small strides towards trying to optimize that sort of environment. But it's, it's a very different world than the world that, that typically teachers, not just teachers, but families are expecting. You know, we had some families wanting their child to be online for the same amount of time that they're sitting in a classroom. It just doesn't look the same.
One thing I'd like to add, Commissioner, Commissioner Nordin and the rest of the board, but also I love hearing from Zoe and Emery, our student reps. But we did have a meeting today where we had students present and I was really impressed with their comments and input. I'll just give you an example today. A young lady from Eau Claire Memorial had just asked, you know, Mr. Johnson, what about the communication to students? How would that flow? Would that flow through our parents or could that come directly to us? Such a situation. Another one was, we really appreciate, Mr. Johnson, that the district would not shut down the entire district, but you're thinking that schools first would be a really good move. And, and that's great. If you have certain hotspots that we wouldn't shut down the entire district. And they asked also, very eloquently, from an equity lens, how do we serve the needs of our students and families differently than last spring if we go 100% virtual as a district? So we discussed, you know, matters related to special education, EL, students in poverty, hotspots. And what about tutorials for parents on Canvas and CSO, for example? So just like Mr. Schmidt illustrated a little bit, our technology department and our teachers are putting videos together for themselves that obviously can be shared with, with parents too. So once again, got some great input from our students this morning.
Well, thank you once again, Superintendent Johnson. We look forward to hearing more as the work progresses. Thank you for communicating with so many stakeholders as well. It's important to have the voice of many different aspects of our community. We'll move on now to our next item. That is the 2020, 2021 calendar modifications. I know there's been some changes to the plan for tonight, but I believe there's still a short presentation from the exec team.
I believe that this is going to be me. So you are correct. Jim and I were prepared to present the proposed calendar, which included modifications to the current 2020-2021 school year calendar. The modifications to the calendar are necessary based upon changes to the instructional model, professional development and instructional planning days being incorporated into Wednesdays, snow makeup days when devices and virtual learning are accessible to all students and staff, and then the timing of parent conferences in the fall. So the executive team addressed those modifications in a proposed calendar and then shared that with the ECAE Executive Board, which then of course resulted in further modifications. And so between those two, we had a proposed calendar to share with you tonight for your consideration. But once we had that publication of the proposed calendar, we received numerous suggestions, ideas and areas for consideration from students, staff and families. So in an attempt to give each of those its due consideration, we've decided not to share the proposed modifications to the calendar with you this evening, but rather to wait to work through some of those suggestions and ideas that we received and present a calendar for the board to consider at the actual 5th meeting.
Thank you, Kay. I certainly appreciate hearing that every time that the administration is willing to make changes and consider other viewpoints. So I think this is a positive thing that you're, you're wanting to make sure that you get it as well done as you can. Are there questions at this time from board members or our student representatives? One thing that was requested is that we have this item on the agenda as an individually considered item so that for October 5th, so that the board could take action on it, it need be, and the adjustments could start. Oftentimes we have, you know, sort of a two-meeting process. I wanted to take the, where we hear about it in a report and then we vote on the next meeting. We don't have a full report tonight, but the administration is asking if we would be willing to consider it as an individually considered item. Next time, I would presume that they would have to us the information on the proposed plan beforehand and we would have time to ask any additional questions on that night. But I would like the board to weigh in on your willingness to have that as an individually considered item, given it's... Commissioner Clements?
I think given where we are in the year already, I think it's, it's useful to be flexible and nimble in terms of how we address the, the calendar as long as we're, we're presented with something wherein we have explanation that's anticipates our questions in terms of why proposed changes are, are to be made so that we feel like we're making a informed, you know, decision. Because I think those things are really important to how people arrange their, their calendars and their lives. And as we've seen from emails, you know, how it impacts staff and students as well.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
I guess my, my willingness to, to support this particular approach would also, with the understanding of the likelihood that probably if it were to be voted on, it would not probably, it is also a possibility that there's a further discussion that maybe would have to be dropped to a further meeting as well. That's also a possibility. So I, I guess for, where I'm, where I'm struggling, struggling a little bit though, is it, is the expectation that whatever's presented, that we will be expecting to, to support or not support it. I guess for me, I'm, I'm, to break the, the process in order to do that, I'm not in support of that. But if it's, if it's the likelihood that if something's presented, timely fashion, that we're able to actually ask the questions, have the information presented in an informative way to make an informed decision. My hesitancy is though I wouldn't rush to make a decision on that. So that would be my only hesitation.
Sure. Any individually considered item does not require us to act, but it opens the door for a motion to be made and that we could act. So yeah, we'll certainly build in some time to ask questions on the proposed plan if, if this is the direction that we go. And it also may be, a motion may be made and of course members would then vote the way they needed to. But it does not require that we act on it next time. Other comments or?
I'm comfortable with, with going forward like this as long as there is an ability in the interim to deal with some questions from staff.
Yeah, that would, that would be my agreement as well.
So we'll intend to put it on as an individually considered item. We'll count on the administrative team to supply us with information as quickly as possible. And we will try to be efficient in sending our questions to you ahead of time to get responses, but also we'll have time to discuss for possible action, knowing that the administration would like that action next time. So that then brings us, we will now adjourn to our work session. We have two items that we're going to be working on tonight. The first is an update on coherent governance. I'll be, you know, the discussion and then we'll have just a very brief introduction to discussing our superintendent's evaluation model for this year, which I've asked Dr. Vika to address just very quickly towards the end. So we'll start with coherent governance. You know, we've been doing our, these trainings, we've been to sessions hosted virtually, we've had the Chippewa Falls School Board Representatives here to help us with that. And we continue that work. And tonight for our 30 minutes that we're going to spend on this, I've got kind of three points that I think we'll go through. The first is, I'd like to update you on the work that I and the Policy and Governance Committee have been doing on coherent governance. We'll talk about the work that is left to come. I think I've shared with most of you at, at some point, maybe even as being that it is my goal to have a set of coherent governance policies ready for potential adoption by the board by the end of this school year. Of course, that timeline is always flexible, so I'm not going to make any guarantees at this time, but that is my current goal. Anyway, we'll talk about the work that needs to be done and the ways that I'd like to involve the board as a whole as well as policy and governance in its continued work on that. And then we'll have a time, if there are questions that we just want to talk about amongst ourselves, about the next step. I know at the Policy and Governance Meeting, Dr. Johnson shared some of the things that he's keen on, on exploring more as we go forward. And we want to be ready as a, as a board to move forward and not be jumping into something that we haven't thought enough about or planned for. So we'll have a short time there. Like I said, we'll, we'll cut this for now at 8:40 tonight to stick to our half hour. And so to update you on the work that we've been doing since we've been doing our trainings, coherent governance now is a discussion topic. In all of our policy and governance meetings, we have a standing 30-minute slot at the end of each policy and governance meeting. Those meetings now take place, the Thursdays following board meetings at 1 o'clock. So we'll have another one this week. We'll probably rehash and refresh what we talked about tonight for coherent governance. So that's a work time that we have built into the normal flow of work. So far, most of the work that we have done on coherent governance has been building a repository of policy examples. I've shared with the board members and Superintendent Johnson. Superintendent Johnson, you are welcome to share our, you know, request whoever needs access to those from the executive team or other places to, to view that. So we can, we're willing to share those drafts out as we go. But we've, basically that repository of policy has come from six places. The first is our source book, Good Governance is a Choice, that we have been working through and that each board member has been provided a copy with. That is the kind of foundational text that we've been using to put the skeletons together and to understand coherent governance better. From there, I went and selected five representative districts. Now, there's nothing necessarily magical about five or these districts. The districts that we're, that we, that I selected were Racine, which actually has some example policies in Good Governance is a choice and is a Wisconsin district that is large, much in the same way that we are. We chose Chippewa Falls, which is obviously our neighbor and they've shared with us. It's actually the big repository. I think Superintendent Johnson said it's 160 pages, once you print it all out. They were the ones that suggested if you really want to put yourself to sleep at night, go ahead and look at our policies. Well, I've done that and I've lost sleep because of it. Third, we chose, I used DeForest, Wisconsin. That was one of the presenting districts at the Coherent Governance Workshop that some members of the board and Mr. Johnson attended. Serendipitously, Mr. Johnson has worked closely with members of the DeForest administration in his career and so has some connections there. That was a, a nice connection as well. From there, I looked outside Wisconsin. I went to, I downloaded the policies from Aspen, Colorado. That is actually, I think, the home district of Quinn and Dawson. They both work, are based in Colorado. And whether or not it's their actual home district, their consulting group is the Aspen group. So Aspen has been involved in coherent governance for quite some time. And then I chose Fairfax County, Virginia, mostly because it's, you know, a different part of the country out on the East Coast. The county model is of course different than the model that we have here for school districts in Wisconsin. And I thought that could provide a counterpoint. Additionally, Fairfax County has a very blended model of coherent governance. They use Torture of a Graduate as a results policies. And that can give us, I thought could serve as a possibility for looking at individualization, things that, you know, we don't have, we can, we can make this our own. And just gives another viewpoint. We can certainly add to that if there are other districts, you know, one of the main members of the workshop we went to was Sun Prairie. You know, they're very active with coherent governance. There's a number of other districts around Wisconsin that we could add. And I would not suggest that these are somehow for sure the best examples. I just wanted to get a variety of examples from across the state and nation that we could use when looking at it. So I've, I've put all of those into one document and I've started to break them out, as I think some of the board members had a chance to see in, in a different way so we can look at individual policies across all five districts by their specific content. So those are all available as we go to work forward. And then I have been working on draft policies for some of them that don't tend to show a lot of variation across, that aren't the individualized ones that don't probably need to involve a ton of modification district to district. Those specifically are the board superintendent relations policies in all three of the Wisconsin districts and Aspen. They're essentially the same because the relationship that we set out with the superintendent is meant to be, you know, sort of standardized. Now, that doesn't mean we can't add or subtract things, but I just thought if I draft some of those, then policy and governance can work on them and not have to spend a ton of time on wording choices or small issues when we would be better served to put our efforts into the much more individualized pieces, which is really going to be results. And then to some extent, operations. Those are the ones where we're really going to want to have Eau Claire as a focus, the commitment from this board to equity and anti-racism as a focus and other issues. So I took the, I had the flexibility of time to be able to just kind of put some of those together. So I know that you've seen that and we don't have to talk about them specifically. Policy and Governance will be reviewing them at some point as we go forward. But that's really the extent thus far of the work that we've been doing over the past couple of months with policy and governance. At this time, I'll just open it quickly to any questions from members about, you know, the work that's been done up to this point before we move on to what, what comes next.
Fisher Harder?
Yeah, I'll just say thanks for, for this work so far from the, from PNG and, and whoever's helped to compile these. I got a chance to look through some of the documentation and some of the, I think it's very helpful to have such a broad, relatively broad range of samples to, to, to look at and look at different ways this was approached. I think it's very helpful. And it was exciting, exciting to read it and think about ways that we could move forward. Thanks for doing that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Harder. We've certainly, like I said, we've made it a priority to hold space for it in each of our Well, thank you, Commissioner Harder. We've certainly, like I said, we've made it a priority to hold space for it in each of our policy and governance. We know this is an important step and I think it's a way that we can really support this district and focus our efforts as a board to the results and getting those things done, so. Commissioner Zer?
Uh yeah, uh what is the, when, can you give me a an idea of? When we're all, I'm just zooming out. When we're all finished with this, right? When so, are we going to be able to bounce this off of some of 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 somebody? Are we going to be able to take what we have come up with to a set of school districts or people who are knowledgeable about coherent governance? And and sort of not necessarily have an audit, but have some sort of um input or assessment of what we've come up with to, you know, where they could point to. Because I think what we're doing right now is we're kind of going into their, you know, we're going into their policies and we're combing through them for what we feel works for us. But it, but how, having never, none of us, having never been there, what is the plan for? Uh as we move towards finalization or discussion or uh of these, what is our plan for getting feedback from folks who know more about it than we do?
So I think that's a great question and I think it's something that we should definitely do. One of the things in my third thing, questions to the board and ideas about training needs. If you want to come over and look at my outline, I think we're definitely need some training, both I I think I think something, you know, call it an audit for lack of a better word. Certainly, we will send it by our legal team to make sure we haven't run afoul of that.
Yeah, yeah.
But but certainly, yes, getting some feedback from other districts that are using coherent governance to let them speak. Um and and get some feedback from people who have been working in it for a while, I think is a is a great idea. And I think it's something that we should prioritize uh going forward, you know, especially as we get more things built up, you know, towards the end, so we can have a product to sell. That's a a great idea and I'd love to include that in our training. And we can discuss other training needs uh a little bit later because I think ongoing support for the board, for our development, to be able to use coherent governance effectively, right? Just putting these policies in is not a silver bullet to solve all of our problems. It's not going to make our meetings better if we don't train on how to do it. So we'll, we can, uh let me just move that back, but I, that's a great point and something that I've been thinking about as well. So I'm glad to hear that others, it's on their mind.
Yeah, just if we need to start building those relationships. Yeah, of of you're looking for those folks who might be a serve in a mentorship capacity for us. Um so that, you know, we all feel really confident for what we're coming up with or what we're deciding on or what we're reviewing. Um that that it's it's good, I guess.
That it's good. All right, yes. Um yeah, and I think the the districts around the state that work on coherent governance have always uh offered assistance. And it seemed keen to participate on answering questions. I think that can be something that we can be reaching out early and have that lined up for when we're ready, so. I think that actually moves us into what what comes next. Certainly that finding some partner districts to help us uh along the way is is one of those tasks. Um it's obvious to me after having worked on it and coherent governance and I will call on Dr. Johnson, Commissioner Clements to nod along. That we're going to need more than just a half hour twice a month in order to get this done. If you don't want to nod along, that's of course fine. Um but my idea going forward is to also then try to include the board uh as a whole, but also other other members that aren't on PNG. So that we can collaborate as we go as a group and build that understanding and build those policies. So um much like we did when we did the superintendent's search, um we often had tasks that needed to be completed. And Dr. Pika would invite whichever board members were available and and willing to participate in that. You know, I went to most schools on our visits to talk with staffs along with Dr. Vika and a different group of us. Uh we ended up splitting up the the phone calls to check references and talk with people in districts as we move forward. And so we we just formed smaller working groups, noticed all the meetings and and worked in small groups. So what I'd like to probably do is start putting out to the board as a whole opportunities for essentially smaller working groups. And they can be, one, directly on, you know, drafting some of these individual policies as well as, you know, working on on how can we find out our training needs? How can we organize viewpoints and hear from other people so that it's not just the seven of us that are pouring into this? But we're getting voice from other stakeholders in our in our enterprise. Um though, again, this is, it would be just to try to get a wider collaboration between us. Just to work out so that myself and Dr. Johnson and Commissioner Clements don't uh hit a pile of a hundred and sixty pages every time we step in. Uh and again, to increase the voice and the responsiveness that we can have to the needs of our community. So uh I mentioned a few things. Some of the other things that I I'd like us to consider is a preamble to our policies. Uh Aspen has in their governance culture policies, a set of beliefs that they stand to as their, in one of their governance culture. Um but I actually think that Sun Prairie, who recently put out a preamble to their board policies, uh that actually specifically addresses standing by their students of color. And uh equity as a focus. I think that would be something that would be very powerful for us as an overall sort of set of shared values for the board that leads into our coherent governance. So I'd I'd like to potentially explore that with a with a group of people and bring that to bring that forward. Uh we of course need to draft our occupational, our occupational, operational expectations and our results policies, the two most tailored sets of policies to individual district. And of course, those that the board is saying this is what we're committed to, is achieving these results within these this set of boundaries. Uh in terms of operational expenses, uh expenses, operational expectations, we need to be be some critical thinking about what policies do we need to set at the level of coherent governance board policies? What things do we want to continue to have our uh, you know, be board decisions or rules? And what things do we entrust then to the administration? Uh I'm certainly um going to be very forceful and I think that the board will probably agree, including language around anti-racism and equity policy at that operational expectation that we expect to operate in that way. Uh and some strong language there. Uh in terms of results, I would like us to start brainstorming a little bit about what voices we want to and how we can get to listen. We can't very well have in-person listening sessions at this moment, but we need to, I think we need to have some, we need that voice from a large group of people. So, you know, I just jotted down on my outline here, staff and teachers, the administrative and executive team, students, parents, and maybe even in the broader community, especially around results. Uh you know, what are we looking for? What do we want our students to look like? And we have a lot of that information, you know, in our mission and vision and some of those statements, we can draw those in as well. Yeah, and then my my idea, at least on the drafting of policies, is these smaller working groups would draft them and PNG would would take them and review them sort of through the normal policy and governance process. And then we would bring them to the full board for more discussion with the overall goal to create this full set that we've had robust discussion on and be able to adopt. Uh en masse as the, as Quinn and Dawson suggests we would do if we were going forward. Yeah, so that's sort of the work going forward as I see it. As I said, I'm going to be inviting all of you, whatever your availability or interest is. Uh there's no requirements to be involved in any particular thing, but I'd love to have all of you or uh whenever you can available to help with this process. We'll talk next about just general questions that we have going forward and training needs, but are there, what questions do you have about the work going forward? Or things that you've been thinking about that need, that's work that needs to be done that I missed in my thinking for better. Dr. Johnson?
Well, I'll I'll just reiterate, uh you know, I think some of the conversation that we had in PNG, I I guess I uh I'm not sure with the other commissioners. I'm I am not completely, you know, a sold on the coherence government of 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 approach, especially for me. It's the ensuring of appropriate lines of communication uh from, from the superintendent, the executive team, from president of the board to the other other commissioner. It's really um uh after going through the session with our uh with our counterpartship with Falls. Uh and someone who uh deals with, you know, any accountability and they, I don't know how you quantify trust. You know, I uh the the only quantifiable trust or non-quantifiable trust that I'm comfortable with, I guess, is, you know, within my, within my marriage. So and with my kids, so you know, I I I guess for me, though, as it relates to what we're supposed to do as a board, it's supposed to be results oriented. So that communication piece has to, uh the the outcome of communication has to be desired results. And the communication has to be, be, you know, I I think transparent enough that uh a lot of entities, you, inside and outside of the school, will play play a role in that. And I'm just, as I'm, as I'm reading, as I, as I indicated to you, uh to you, Dr. New, Commissioner Harder, I I I still struggle. I I I I struggle with that. And one of those recurring themes that continue to come out when we're listening to our counterparts in 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 Chippewa Falls. We just, we just trust superintendent, you did right there. I think Superintendent Johnson is 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 a great, is a great guy. Superintendent Johnson has to be held accountable, sort of, and so. I guess my, as as we, as we move forward in this particular direction, I would, I would appreciate further conversation in. In in how do we, we, we have quantifiable metrography that that we do? And what does uh effective communication look like? And communication that's satisfiable, I think for us as commissioners, when we have to respond and our communicate to um to the community. And uh and 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 vice versa. And for me, I I'm just missing it in the reading and I think that's really unfortunate that actually you have to read this again. And 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 so, you know, but but that's okay. I I I you are reading, I'll, I'll read it again, but that that piece I'm I'm missing. So those of you who are a little bit more familiar or you, that you're uh more bought into this particular process, that that sharing that with me, wanting to hear that I would. Because I, as I, I said, I'm really, that's a, that's a hiccup for me right now as it relates to really the the that trust communication piece and whether, you know, is it is is trust? In such, in in this particular process, is it quantifiable? You know, and and how do we ensure uh uh communication is there in order to build this so-called trust that's needed to make coherent governance work? So I I would just reiterate that. Thank you.
I think that's well said, Dr. Johnson. And I'm going to open it. I'd I'd like to hear from, you know, maybe Commissioner Harder or Dr. Vika. You've been working on this uh as long as as any of us. If you have thoughts regarding that, or even Commissioners Lyons or Clements, you know, you're the next two after me in terms of seniority. Um but I will point out, I will just to the ability to have more conversations around it and develop that. Uh we have started to block out regular work sessions in our our board calendar. For the second meeting of each month, we are going to be blocking out specific time to have work sessions primarily. Uh next, the one uh for the nineteenth of October, we'll actually focus probably on the superintendent evaluation process with a little bit on coherent governance. But then beyond that, this is going to be most likely our big board project that we're on. So we will have um blocked out time to have more of those discussions and to develop that shared understanding. But I think you're right on about needing to to monitor everything and and verify and and work on our communication, which is, you know, one of the things that we we really are working on across the district as we go. So I want to thank you. So but I'll open it to any of my other colleagues that I want to share their thoughts on Dr. Johnson's. Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Johnson's uh comments sum up a lot of the concerns I have had about this approach and continue to have about this approach pretty, pretty well. Um I do think that this is a, whether we employ some version of a coherent governance model or not. That there is a level of trust and a level of delegation that needs to happen between the board and superintendent. There's inherently an important relationship there. For me, as somebody with a little bit of experience that I have, it's, you know, whatever, it's four and a half years or whatever, can, you know, as the senior member here, it's on the school board. Again, as I've said before, it's a little ridiculous. I'm the senior member. There you go. Um from that level of experience, though, I will say that it reflects uh what I see as essentially the reality of the situation, but makes you focus on it. To me, it's the reality of the situation is the board should be focused on what the board is specially set up to do, which is decide about policy. And to set up a framework of of policy and like you were talking about, these assessments. And to watch closely and watch regularly and watch on a schedule that these things are happening and to discuss them in in meaningful ways. And hopefully get to more and more meaningful conversations and away from what I find to be a trend as as, you know, again, in my four years. Focusing, for example, instead on operational questions, which uh, you know, they can be a big distraction from the thing that we uniquely can deliver for this district, which is policy and framework. So I I don't think it's about doing one and not doing the other. It's, for me, it's about changing focus so that we're focusing on the thing that we're uniquely here to do, from my point of view, anyway. So I I don't know if that's, that moves the conversation long at all, but that's, those are some thoughts that I have as I, as I listen.
Dr. Vika?
As uh as I'm thinking about getting ready to talk about superintendent evaluation, I really, um well, I'm really reminded of the the value of coherent governance emerges in such a strong way. When you're thinking about the annual evaluation. And as Commissioner Harder was saying, you know, um really getting focus of of the board's core responsibilities. I I mean, I would add, it's a way to go from, you know, anecdotes and um kind of unorganized data to, you know, systematic assessments. Um I I think that coherent governance actually enhances communication and enhances trust. It gives you the feeling of things that are kind of slippery and unmeasurable to things that can be um measured, you know, quantitatively or qualitatively in systematic ways. So a thought that had crossed my mind is, uh could we uh right at this time reach out to the Aspen group and ask Randy Quinn and or Linda Dawson about serving as a consultant for us?
I'm personally glad to hear you say that. That's been on my mind and I didn't want to run every, every idea, having a consultant of some sort for that that training piece. Commissioner Lyons?
Uh no, continue. I do have a comment, but uh.
Fine, I'll, we can go ahead and that, and then we can, we can uh take just a few minutes to talk about some of those training needs and and what we'll need to support us as a board, but I'll, you can go ahead.
So, you know, this is a big topic and I'm trying to get my my arms around the the totality of it. And it seems to me that there's some sequencing. And you were talking about a preamble in here I was kind of looking for and um. One of the the coherent governance documents it says is really about governance culture. And it seems to me if 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 we start with something that's all encompassing, that it starts us thinking about an umbrella preamble or statement. That that starts to form all those other policies around that. And to Commissioner Johnson's comments, I'm I'm looking at the Racine governance culture and they're talking about results and operational expectation. And so I think that if we can build some of those expectations into some sort of preamble or vision statement or governance culture. That it starts to align some of the the other coherent governance topics that are maybe waterfalling under that.
If governance culture is the next um, a set, it's the next sort of step. Board superintendent relations were tended to be very, you know, kind of cut and dry, the five suggested policies, and they didn't tend to vary. Uh and then governance culture is where much of it is very similar as I look, as you look through the the five that I chose. But uh the actual like expectations of meetings and Aspen is the one that has a set of values in their governance culture. I think if you look in the, I think it's in the the draft document for governance culture policies, there's a link to the Sun Prairie preamble. Which you can see the the kind of example of their shared values that they go that, but that can be, and if it's not in the right spot, let me know and I'll I'll make sure that you get an opportunity to see that. Going, but I think, yes, that sequencing and building that governance culture, I think you're right, can help too. Commissioner Zer?
Um so one of the things that I
So one of the things that I am curious about, and I have not had a chance to review. I have, I read all of the smaller ones, but the big repository, I have not gotten through it all yet. I'm working on it.
Neither have I, to be fair. I put them all in there. I have not read every one.
Well, I'm trying, but you're right. It is a sleepy one. The thing that you said that really struck me and I'm curious to hear more about it. The result policies and listening to, so one of the things that I have very strong curiosity about is, is we're about to kind of, you know, we're about to set this vision as a board for our district. And we're about to say that these are the things that matter and these are the things that we want to see our students achieve by the time they leave our district. And I think you hinted at community work and listening to community voice there. And I, I want that to be robust. And I don't want it to be, I don't think that what we've done in the past has worked. I don't think there has been a good system. I don't, I can't find one. This has been a curiosity of mine of how do we actually hear community voice? How do we facilitate community discussions around education when it's such a complex field? And when we go out and say, what do you want your child to achieve? What do you as a student want to achieve? What is important to you? How do we organize that conversation in a way that is effective for what we, for what we need to do as a board? And then what we need to communicate in a policy so that then the, you know, the district, the administration, the superintendent can then make that happen? So it's a, it is a, it is a very simple question that we need to ask, right? But it has to get filtered through all of this. I mean, I hate to say it, I hate to point at us, but it has to get filtered through all of our privilege, right? It has to get filtered through all of our knowledge and all of our, you know, ability to make the rules. So I really, I really want to see that somehow. I want us to nail that part of it because I think that that is so, so important that we really hear our community. We really hear the people who we are here to serve. And that we're not making those policies just because another district has them or because this is, you know, this is what we should say. This is what we should stand for. What if that's not what our community, what if that's not what our kids want? What if that's not what our parents want? You know, I just want to make sure that we nail that part of it.
Well, then I hope when I put out the call for that particular work group, that Commissioners Zer's email comes back first. That's part of what I think we need is a good deal. We need to listen as well as, I mean, some things. And they do have the skeleton in here and we can add or even subtract as we, as we need, especially to tailor those needs. So I appreciate what you're saying and I, I want us to nail it also. And that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight so that we can get sort of rolling on it going forward. Commissioner Harder?
I guess I'll say as a voice who's kind of consistently advocated for this over the months, I still have my questions and doubts, but I feel pretty bullish about it. But what Commissioner Zer just said about keeping those lines of communication open, extremely important to me as well, not only with community, but also with staff. And that we are understanding, as well as it can be understood, the various opinions that the community is having, the various opinions that the staff is having, that we have a clear, as clear a picture of possible of that as we go through the decisions we do have to make. And through the decisions that we delegate to the superintendent. You know, we've talked about in the work session, the superintendent isn't suddenly in a vacuum, who's, you know, unaware of the political pressures of community opinion, of staff opinion, of board opinion. You know, that those are still heavy factors. Even as we move into coherent governance, that's what we were, we were told that this is, you know, been the experience. And so I hope that will be true, but I see it as a way to, part of our framing is if we agree as a board that we care about communication, that that's part of the framing and part of what we're looking for and part of what we're assessing.
Yeah, I'll give, Commissioner Clemens, I'm going to give you the closing comment here just in the interest of time. But as I mentioned, we are going to have regular work sessions for full board discussion of this topic and more questions. And we're going to be doing all this work kind of behind the scenes together. So we, if we don't get to it tonight, you know, the conversation is definitely going to continue. So go ahead, Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you for letting me last. So the comment I've been holding on to for the last few minutes is, I think we all have some concerns and also some expectations for the promise that this model could provide for us as a district. But the question that comes back to me is compared to what? So, you know, I think we need to have some model on which to govern, otherwise it become, it deteriorates into some sort of ad hoc process, which sets everybody up for failure and sets the district up for failure. And so unfortunately, I have observed many groups, organizations, public sector, governments kind of operating under that model, that there is, there is no model. It's just, we just go kind of by the seat of our pants all the time. And then you deteriorates into who has a stronger political position or decides to assert themselves on a certain issue. So, you know, what attracts me to this model is it is, it's coherent. It has a structure of what, what's the board's role? What's the staff's role? Obviously the devil's in the details in terms of how do we operationalize it effectively? And I expect that's going to be an ongoing journey. And our successors will continue to struggle with how to continue working with it in their own capacities. But, you know, I think at my 10,000 foot level of understanding, I think there's, the sky's the limit. If we can, if we have the right approach to it and that we can diligently work on, you know, not just putting it in place and saying we're good. It's something we're going to have to continuously work on to make sure that, you know, we govern well. And rather than just checking a box and saying we have, you know, certain policies in place.
Thank you. The discussion tonight for me has been invigorating. So I just want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners. I could not be happier to go into this process with this particular group. I think the insight that you're bringing is, I think it's challenging and is going to make this, as Commissioner Clemens, you know, a strong product, the sky's the limit. So thank you. We'll continue to talk about it going forward. Let's flip over to our other just brief discussion point tonight, that is the superintendent evaluation. And I'll let Dr. Vika introduce that.
Thank you. So as you all know, it's the responsibility of the school board to conduct regular performance reviews of the superintendent. And the Oakley Area School District procedures are outlined in our policy 225. I think Maida is ready to display that policy on the screen. So people can read this at their, at their leisure. You'll notice that we conduct this evaluation annually. And there are three key points during the year. In February, there's superintendent goal setting and adoption of the goals. In July, we've had an interim progress report from the superintendent. And then in December is when the formal evaluation takes place. I thought it would probably also be helpful to share some of the specifics of the approach that we've taken in recent years. And that Maida is going to share a document that we can, we can place for everybody to access. Some people have seen this before and some people will be seeing it for the first time. So we've used these six standards as the organizing framework of our evaluation. Notice, and there's nothing magic about 2017 is just simply used it as a starting point because it was recent enough. And that was the time when I joined the board. So I guess I'm most familiar with the work that's happened since that time. But the data for the evaluations have simply come from superintendent's written self-evaluation and board members' individual observations and experiences. So we're all going to have the opportunity to evaluate a superintendent with no coherent model fully in place. And I mentioned that there, prior to 2017, that this board did use a 360 degree evaluation. And we can talk about sort of, you know, kind of people's perceived advantages and disadvantages of using that tool. So a 360 is a general term used of gathering data from different, different groups. And the board, given their policy, the board can specify those groups. Staff members, you know, executive team, directors, principals. And it's really open and there are certainly many, many models that we could consult for the 360. I think I think we have a tremendous opportunity with many new board members, a new superintendent and some interest in exploring coherent governance. We can use this year as a transition from old models of evaluation to new ones. If there are questions about anything that came up to this, this is really just, I think, meant to be a very just general introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Vika. I think our goal for next, our next work session, which will be at the October 19th workshop, is to try to put together some, some sort of outline, maybe it's, maybe it's our set of standards for this transition time when we don't have a coherent governance model to guide, which basically the the policy fulfillment becomes the evaluation. But in, so one of the things that I'd like for you to be doing as board members over the next month or so is thinking about what are the ways that, what are the standards on which we need to evaluate Mr. Johnson's performance for this year? And again, as Dr. Vika pointed out, that looking back and forth, looking at it as a transition period may be helpful. And then how do we want to hold that? So we'll, we're going to, you know, if there's any questions right now, we would just take a couple of minutes. But the goal for next time is going to be to try to do some of that work and prepare for that evaluation. Go ahead, Commissioner Zer.
So just, just, can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
So to Commissioner Clemens' point about, about having witness government, government agencies kind of flying without a, an organizational model. Am I wrong to say that the board is organized under policy governance currently? Is that, is that a correct? Is that, is that a correct?
I would argue that the board is, I mean, maybe you could call it policy governance.
Are we supposed to be in policy governance? That's what I'm asking.
Perhaps, but there is no, we have no official model.
I can say, I think we, I think if we're, if we're under any model officially still, it's KeyWorks. But that is a model that, you know, I still have a copy of that book somewhere, but I haven't, you know, I don't think it's been employed a lot as far as I know. But it's the model that I believe is still the last one that was adopted officially.
Okay. So is there, just, just to see, it would, you know, I, I was always assuming that we were under a different model and that we were moving to a new model.
We're moving to a model.
So if, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, like this is, this is me coming from, I, you know, policy governance in a couple of other capacities in my, my experience, but never through an evaluation of this, of this 90s. So what I would like to see is some, whether it's Aaron has to dust off a book from somewhere in his basement, but to find a copy of some form of evaluation that, of the model that we are supposed to be using, just, just as, just as a touch point, not to say that this is the way to do it, but I would just love a frame of reference because I can now, I can kind of see coherent governance and how, what we're aiming for. And now with what Dr. Vika has presented, you know, kind of where we have been. But, you know, a little bit more information about what we could be doing or what we maybe not necessarily should be doing, but what previous boards have thought would be a good model for our system?
So what Dr. Vika shared, I think, was the actual evaluation form that was used for Dr. Harder's evaluations, obviously for the past, I guess, eight years.
And is that the keynote version of the evaluation inherent?
Key works. It's Key Works of School Boards, I think is the title of that book. I think I'm one when I joined the board, but again, I've not seen anything employed from it.
Okay.
My understanding is that this set of evaluations, which does go back certainly further than 2017, it's the same set I've always seen, but that those were developed from the Key Works. Though I, I can't guarantee it. I was not the person who did that work.
Just one person's opinion, and this is Lori. In the time that I've been in the board, I have not been able to identify any particular model. I'm not aware that, that my work, at least personally, has followed any model.
And that's why we're doing this work right now.
Maybe we are closer to Commissioner Clemens.
This coherent governance came up a long time ago and I think part of it was, hey, we're not using Key Works, folks. You know, and that was kind of the framing was we're not doing this. Let's not pretend. What should we do? I certainly remember that framing several times in the early discussions. This is going back years ago.
Just as something I think to try to spark your thinking process over the next month as we think about how, what are the standards that we want? I think one of the things that the board coalesced around fairly strongly in the superintendent search was what we sort of, we started calling kind of our three pillars. We were looking at candidates and that was commitment to equity, commitment to staff and system relationships and building communication relationships. And then communication and relationships with the community as a whole. That we had a lot of discussion about that as we were looking at candidates and ultimately selecting Superintendent Johnson. And I think, I think that's something that, that for me could be sort of foundational. Now we have to think about how to measure those things or how we would evaluate those things. But to me, that's something that is the front of my mind on how would we evaluate our superintendent in this transition time before we have the current governance. And that's, not that it has to be, but I just wanted to put that out as a, as something that I've been thinking about a lot as we've been starting off Superintendent Johnson's tenure, are those sort of three pillars? So that might be somewhere to jump off from and maybe not, but we can have some more of that discussion. Again, we'll have a set time and work, we're scheduled for the October 19th meeting to do that. So bring your ideas and of course, communication before that is welcome. Just ideas to bring forward or even how to structure that time would be helpful. At this point, I'll ask for requests for future agenda items. I know we have the transition plan potentially, and we also have the changes to the calendar for next time. Are there other agenda items that you'd like to have on the October 5th or further agendas?
Are we going to get another just general update of the instructional model?
We are currently planning for continued updates. I think the next one we had talked about in agenda setting last Tuesday being about adjustments in the virtual model and what we're doing with some of those requests and how we're working on it. So there will be an update on that portion, I think, but we'll, there will be an update. That was what we had originally talked about.
Is it sort of the students who are requesting to switch? That's what we're.
I think that's, that's at least going to be a part of the discussion. So, but we will have an update as to it next time. And that goes along with Dr. Johnson's request for continuing on these updates in the early part of the year about how things are going.
Sure. Just maybe an expanded, I guess, the bulk of the, the bulk of the community inquiries that I've been receiving are still the folks who are struggling a lot with their child's virtual component with classes, you know, four classes being scheduled at the same time or, you know, just, I mean, these just things that we need to iron out. And so just to know that that is, you know, just kind of keep our eye on that, I think would be, it's not the coherent governance thing to do, but I'm, I'm curious.
We can certainly have some updates on the work that is being done with the virtual to continue to, you know, as Superintendent Johnson said, you know, we're going to be improving day by day and week by week. So hearing about that, the virtual thing, I think is something we can probably agree. So, hearing about that, the virtual segment, I think is something we'd probably agree. Hearing no other requests for agenda items, it is 8:59. I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you adjourn?
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.